I call to order the special meeting of council 6:30 June 23. Please stand for the political allegiance. Let's lay allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and as you're a Republican for which it stands, one nation, united, we will be liberated for all. All right, call please Ms. Buck.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Bobo Brainerd?
Present.
Mr. Scupora?
Mr. Bald Mary?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Walker?
Here.
Six present.
At this time, do we have any citizens' requests that are relative to the agenda items?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item on the agenda appears under the Public Works Department and it is a resolution. It's entitled, Acceptance of Bid and Awarding of Contract for Painting and I'll therefore be resolved. Section 1, that the bid of $234,453 submitted by Derrick Construction Company, Inc., in accordance with bid specifications for labor materials for the 2014 street paving project at the unit price is set forth in a bid where total contract amount excluding any change orders, amount to exceed $234,453B, and the same is hereby accepted for the paving of Wall Streets as set forth in the bid specifications in section 2, that a contract being the same as hereby awarded to Derrick Construction Co., Inc., at unit prices and in accordance with all bid specifications, that a total contract price exceed excluding any change orders, amount to exceed $234,453.
Hello.
Subject to approval of the contract by the city engineer in section 3, that the mayor, secretary, and any other proper city officer are authorized and directed to sign the contract documents and take all action necessary.
Hello.
To carry into effect this resolution and the contract approved herein resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by this decision.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Madeline. Second, speaking. Any questions or discussions?
Yeah, I do. Joe, Avenue E, I don't know where that came from.
Okay, as we discussed, first of all, I'd like to thank the committee this year. We worked with the KIT committee on the paving program. It went really well. I appreciate all the help and we've gotten some other things accomplished. As I mentioned, Mr. Bald Mary at one of our meetings, that we allow the water company to sometimes piggyback on any of our paving. We allow them to hop on board with whoever we have. That benefits everybody. They get a better price, we're bidding out more, hopefully we get a better price. The cost for Avenue E, which is what the water company wanted to do, was $31,182. So the city's portion of that $234,453 is $203,271, which is right in line with what we had budgeted this year.
What was budgeted?
Pardon me?
What was exactly about budgeted? Somewhere around there. Okay, awesome.
We were allowing, we were allowing $206,000 actual paid according to my figures, barring no change orders or, you know, problems out there. But the $31,000 is coming from the water company and also of that $204,000, or $201,000, whatever, $203,271, we will be getting, in fact, I believe we received today, Ms. Buck, a check from the gas company for $25,000 towards grant.
We'll receive it tomorrow. And Paul is supposed to get it tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. So everything's fallen right in place for us this year. Thank you for the committee.
Nice work, committee.
Hey Joe, Joe, whenever we plan the streets and that, do we contact the utilities to see what they're going to be tearing up?
Yes.
And so that, because they're legally liable, certain repairs, I believe, that wouldn't they do tear up anyway, aren't they?
No. They're liable for what they tear up.
They're liable for that amount?
Oh, yes, yes. But we do have a working relationship with all the utility companies.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, in the capital account, the amount that was budgeted, the actual budget figure was $180,000.
Where'd we get the rest?
I don't know, did you add to that?
The, the $25,000 from the gas company.
Oh, right, right, okay. Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014- Blank. My notes are in my regular meeting book, so I don't know if you have. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Scupora? Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobo Brainerd?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
We have the six, yes.
Next item, Mr. Kelly?
Next item appears under Administration Finance and it's basically a motion asking council to approve a term loan from First National Bank for the purchase of the Mack refuse truck. We are going to have an ordinance ready for the July meeting, but at this point in time, we need some direction from council, whether you want to go four, five, or six years on the loan. That's, that's the only thing to be decided, see. Obviously, if we go longer, we will, I'm going to take it, oh, here it is right here. I have three different amortization schedules. The four-year would require a total number of payments of $159,370.46. Now, that's principal and interest, so the interest on four years will amount to $6,035. If we went with a five-year term, the interest is going to be $8,642, so we're about $2,000 difference on the five-year term and on the six-year term, the interest would amount to $11,563. So it would appear to me that the six-year term is fairly expensive in terms of interest, almost $5,000 more than, than the four-year term. So the real question that I would think is, do we want to go four years or five years?
Finance committee, if only there's one who's just mentioned.
Well, Mike and I haven't talked about this at all yet and, I mean, I myself have put forward four years because of the savings in the interest.
You okay with that?
That's what I would recommend, yeah.
So unless there's any objections, I think I would need a motion.
Did we have a budgeted?
We won't have a payment until next year.
Yeah, no. Did we have?
Alex said budgeted about $20,000, but we only have to put $3,000 down. So out of that savings is what Joe was going to have the, that flood problem that we're taking care of, right? Two have fallen in.
So we didn't budget $159,000?
No. I meant to pay for the year before.
A four-year loan, the payment each year would be $39,842.62 and we could budget for that in the capital account. The difference between that and the five years is $32,395. So to me, it's better to do a four-year for the savings.
We, I mean, if we only budgeted 20 grand this year, where are we at the other 20?
Our first payment won't be due until next August.
Yeah, I understand that, but, well, we'll just have to budget it. We won't find it out, we have to have a truck. So do I have a motion then to, what am I looking for?
The motion, I'll read the motion if it's four years. The motion would read, I move we approve a four-year loan term for the financing and purchasing of that truck. The motion and somebody has to make it.
What he said, do I have a motion?
I have a motion to take it for four years.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck? Oh no, it's a motion, so it's all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The last action I'd mandate, mayor members of council, is item 200 Administration Finance. It is a resolution. I will read it. It reads, Reducing City Healthcare Plan with UPMC. Whereas the city currently provides healthcare coverage to its employees pursuant to the provisions of city policy and our collective bargaining agreements, said coverage being provided through the UPMC Small Business Advantage Plan. Whereas the plan has a policy period of one year commencing July 1 of each year, whereas the city desires to renew the plan with UPMC. Now therefore, be resolved, section 1, that the council of city Luttrell, hereby approves redoing the plan with UPMC to provide healthcare coverage for designated beneficiaries for a period commencing July 1, 2014 through and including June 30, 2015. Said contract document being attached here to Exhibit A. In section 2, that the mayor and the city secretary, being the same, are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents necessary and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the re-rule of the plan approved herein resolved in council this date. The plan attachment is the same plan that we currently have for the year 2013, 2014, and that is attached as Exhibit A. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by this decision.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Questions or discussions?
I have a question on that.
No, you don't. Sorry. I'm sorry, Joe.
Okay.
I have a question. How much more per year is this, is it going up and did we budget for it?
I don't know if Alex had rolled any extra percentage in or not.
Okay.
But I can let you know.
Isn't it like $7,000 a year?
More than what we've been paying?
Yeah.
I don't know.
If my memory serves me correctly, it's about, I'm thinking that's what it was.
I know it's 32%.
I'm sure it's in there.
Well, she has the total amount.
Yeah.
But not much of a difference. I mean, you have the, it's, you have to look and see what we, what we're budgeting for.
Let me see that book, because I thought she had four. That's the same one she gave me.
Yeah.
July 1, the current plan, July 1 of 2013, the total monthly premium, oh, I'm sorry. The total monthly premium July 1 of 2013 is $21,546 and the total monthly premium for July 1 of 2014 is $28,000, so it's $7,000 a month.
Oh, okay.
And that's a 32% increase.
For the year.
For the year. And I'm sure we didn't budget that, but it's contractual, so there's not a whole lot we can do about it at this point until we get the contract talks.
Mike had talked about bargaining units.
Units.
And with the time restraint, we couldn't get them both on board for the plan, so we have to go with what has been in the past, so.
I would say $282,000.
He budgeted, yeah, he budgeted, okay.
He might have a little bit of a raise in there, but I don't know.
Not nearly, no, because it's actually, it's going from $258,000 in, in this fiscal year to $340,000 for the next.
Twenty-eight times a month. Three hundred and thirty-six.
Well, it's 28,449.3, but, so it's close. Contracts, both contracts, I believe, expired at the end of this year, so just ask me, I hope the FOPs did too, because I hope they were concurrent.
Just ask me.
When's theirs?
They're, they're off Saturday. It's either next year or the year after.
The problem we have is we can't have two plans.
Yeah, they don't let us.
Oh, right, the FOP was last week. We can't do them separate.
With the Affordable Care Act, it may just change everything regardless of what our choices are.
Yeah, but we're not going to have to do that until the following year. And just so you know, the Affordable Care Act language took our premiums up 70%, according to what?
We do have a plan for that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So any other questions or discussions about this? There's a motion and a second. Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2014- Blank. Mrs. Bobo Brainerd?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Okay, anybody have any unfinished business or new business? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting and move on to the agenda. Perhaps, actually, do I have a motion to adjourn? That's in the agenda front. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Now we'll get to the agenda front. Yeah, we'll, we'll shut the page. It has to do with the energy, thank you, energy audit that we talked about on this building. The quotes came in, but I don't believe they've ever grabbed.
It's not a lot.
They don't have.
Yeah, well.
We can call, but we can't. Yeah, we can.
We can turn the lights off, okay?
You're on.
Is that the two paint, okay for me?
No, we're good.
Okay. My name's Richard Phelps. With me today, I'm Mr. Eric Patrassio, Mr. Mark Turner, ABM Building Solutions over in Cannonburg, and we are, as Mayor mentioned, one of your initiatives responding to your request for qualifications in terms of this energy project. Really going to share with you a couple, a number of things, by the way, in terms of how your peers are utilizing the state statute to help them address infrastructural needs without requirement of any tax assistance. The agenda, what we'll really talk about today, okay, is what are we hearing from other public sector clients? What are they telling us based upon the markets? Talk about some of the key initiatives that we've garnered either through the board meeting or council meetings, attending, or talking with administration, or reviewing the financial information, whether it was the study that was done last year or your budget information. Talk about the gift, and there aren't too many that people would say Harrisburg has provided municipalities, but what is the gift? The legislation that allows public sector clients to address these needs? What are the next steps of the process and what makes you think ABM uniquely qualified to address these needs for Luttrell? So since the Great Recession, some of the common themes that we've heard from other public sector clients is the fact that revenues declined significantly since then and they haven't recovered. At the same time, state funding has reduced, the costs incurred by public sector clients is increasing, so what we've tended to see is that while revenues have decreased, the demand on those revenues has only increased and there is a gap between what you can afford to fund. So what ABM helped our clients do is to fund that gap and do it in a way that does not require an increase upon your tax payers. Specifically in terms of Luttrell, what we've come to understand over the last several years in talking with Alex, that there have been revenue increases, whether it is in terms of property taxes, service increases, or earned income tax. And whether you agree with those increases or not, what it has done is it has given you time and has presented you with an opportunity to address some of these needs, hopefully before anything down the line would perhaps even have to happen again. At the same time that those revenues have increased, your costs have also escalated as well. And at the same time, you have infrastructural needs, whether it's in this facility in terms of the HVAC systems, or the roof, or some of the obsolete lighting systems that exist. To the point where we know that those revenue increases helped with your fund balance because if you didn't have those revenue increases, it would have potentially depleted your fund balance even more. As it stands, I understand coming into this fiscal year, you have about $600,000 fund balance, and I know in talking with Alex beforehand, his goal was to hopefully get it up to the million dollar figure, which would allow you the financial flexibility to handle and absorb those unexpected events as they may occur. And a lot of this information that we see here, looking at the total revenues and expenses here and the differences, we know that that earned income tax increase generates about $353,000 for each, based on the information that we read, but in those coming years, the difference, based on that Delta study, is greater than ours. So the potential exists to decrease that fund balance, and we believe this legislation and the statute, the Act 39 legislation, which I'll be introducing in a second, is a great way, one, to address the infrastructural needs, but also, hopefully, replenish that fund balance. So the state many, many, many years ago, recognized that public sector clients, cities, counties, and schools, really had a deteriorating infrastructure with limited to no means to address that infrastructure. And so what they did is they authorized this Act 39 legislation, which we view to be a, it's a funding mechanism to help you address your needs. I apologize, I'm standing in your ruin. It's a way to make capital improvements by harnessing the power within your existing operating budget, no increase in taxes is required, and the improvements are funded through the savings these new assets provide you, okay? There are a couple key aspects of this legislation. You can finance these improvements up to 20 years within the state. Some clients do less than 20 years because they don't want to finance anything beyond the useful life of the assets that they're replacing. But a couple key aspects of this, it's a self-liquidating debt structure, and what I mean by that is you don't have to increase revenues to cover this debt service. You already have the means to do so within your operating budget. And the last point is how that occurs, because the savings that are generated by these new assets have to be in the heat to use. And in the event that there's a shortfall in those, that year, in the actual achieved savings within any given year, the organization that you work with is legally obligated to write you a check to make you hold. Because of that, there has to be yearly measurement verification, which quantifies and confirms that those savings are either achieved or that they weren't achieved and then you're written a check. And just as a sidebar, any savings that are above what is guaranteed to you is yours. You spend that money any way you see fit. So it's a very popular program within the state, and the way that it works is you look at what you're currently spending facility-wise, right, to own and operate your facilities. We're not getting into employees or benefits or things of that nature, just like how you own and operate your facilities. And we're looking to create efficiencies by having new assets that drive offside of each one of these, and these efficiency gains then turn into capital that can be used to address those needs over a period of time. So here's a sample funding form of how one was developed. So for this client, you had the current utilities, which is about $900,000, maintenance of facilities, which included lighting, demand repairs, contracted services, just shy of $55,000, and they had some outstanding debt that was about $325,000. And this bar represents a public accounting barrier, right? You can't encumber future year budgets. You can't say, I'm going to take $100,000 out of next year's budget and do something with it this year. This legislation, and I'll come back to this in a second, specifically helps you to address these unfunded capital needs. Some clients are using these programs to help generate capital to address infrastructural needs, others are using it for general fund relief, others are using it as a blend, a combination between the two options that are available. These are some of the things that other clients have addressed within their facilities in utilizing this legislation.
The make-whole renovation, where's ours going to be?
So utilizing this legislation, that legislation essentially gets rid of that public accounting barrier because those savings have to be guaranteed to you in those future years. Only way you can get around that barrier. So for this client, we were able to drive out almost $225,000 in utility savings. They looked at the maintenance of facilities instead of new assets, right? The expectations are, you're not going to have as much in repairs as you do on the old end. Kind of like the same thing that we all do with cars, when the cost of the repairs is more costly than the new car payment, we'll typically make that switch. And then through some refinancing, they were able to generate $15,009, so a total of $257,000 annually was driven out of these costs and was able to address some of those infrastructural needs. So for this client, over a 15-year term, that's $3.8 million. That you're able to address an infrastructural need today, subtract away whatever your interest penalty is, interest penalty, whatever you finance, the interest rate to be. But the key premise is that whatever you generate in savings has to be greater than or equal to, on an annual basis, your debt service payment. So for this client, they'd be able to generate $3.8 million if they financed it, their payment couldn't be greater than $257,000. And these programs are backed by a three-tiered guarantee. One of the things that we hear all the time is changlers. I heard it today, this evening, but within these programs, it's a firm fixed price program. There are no changlers associated with these programs. Whenever you decide upon that final scope, that's it, okay? Because you can't go and borrow additional money later on for any changlers. So it's very important that everything, when it's developed from a technical and financial perspective, is buried thoroughly. The second is that when construction is complete, the savings, I'm sorry, the systems have to work as designed, because if they don't, the savings on an annual basis won't be achieved. So it's a three-tiered guarantee, which allows you to, one, address your needs, harnessing the power of your existing operating budget, and no increase to your taxes. Makes sense? That's the key premise behind this whole thing, so if this doesn't make sense, more than happy to elaborate on it. Okay? So part of the reason these programs are so popular are where interest rates are today. Now, this chart goes all the way back to 1790, which I think is pretty amazing. And in looking at it, what you see is that interest rates that we have today are really the second lowest in the history of the United States, which allows you to get more done within your facilities and you're paying less in interest and addressing more in terms of a principle of an actual infrastructure needs. So from an opportunity cost of inaction, right? You've got a number of options that are presented to you. You could say, you don't want to do anything, but just as an idea of what's going to happen, your costs are going to continue to escalate. Facilities and systems only get older and they become more costly. The infrastructure needs persist, fund balance degradation. At some point, expenses are going to get more costly than what you're bringing in in terms of revenues. And at that time, your fund balance starts to be utilized to balance your budget on an annual basis. This is a way to help you address those infrastructural needs and hopefully replenish some of that fund balance without having to go to your financials. And then you don't necessarily spend money in terms of utilities, repairs, things of that nature, which you ultimately have nothing to show for at the end of the day, aside from like being on this evening. So what in essence happens is utility company and the contractors that you're working with, they ultimately help foot the bill to pay for this. So from a next steps perspective, you know you went through the RFP process really in the margin to April. Council selects firm, letter of intent, put out the parameters of what are the things you want an organization to focus in upon. There's a number of opportunities that we think are opportunities that exist within the city, from parking, garages, from street lighting to infrastructure within this and so on. The investment grade audit would essentially give you an idea from savings as well as costs associated with each measure, so then you could co-author that final technical scope financially as well as technically. We'll uncover all the savings and then also uncover all the potential funding sources. And through our due diligence today, we've already uncovered some funding sources that can generate some capital for you. And then once that final scope is technically and financially co-authored, then we go begin to execute your vision and your savings again. Question?
How do you get that? Who takes you?
Usually the question that always pops up, right? So our figure is tied into this, so our job in this process is to be... So our job in this process is to design, engineer, procure, project manage, commission, and guarantee those savings on the backend. What you avoid in this process, and the way that we're able to provide that guarantee, what you avoid is essentially an engineering firm saying, I designed it this way, contractor installed it incorrectly. And the contractor saying, no, I installed it for specs, they designed it incorrectly. Because in this situation, you get the finger pointing back and forth. And ultimately, who's left holding the bag of money to fix it? You. Within this process, we engineer, design, procure, project manage the entire process, so that it's a single point of accountability. If something's not right, you go to us.
And how do you go about doing that? I mean, you guys have been in here and met with Alex and identified...
We really haven't toured your facilities at all.
Okay, so that's the next step. So once we would select, we have three bids, and obviously we have to, you know, offered the invitation to the other two bidders to come here as well. So we select a firm, and then you come in and spend how much time in here doing your analysis and everything like that? Depends?
It depends on the scope of what we're looking at. And we have a kind of giving idea in terms of who ABM is, right? This is who, everything that we touch, we're facility experts. All we do is renovate, operate, and maintain facilities. Three billions per feet we manage in Central Pass, 70% of downtown Brooklyn. So we have a security division, we have a parking division that actually looks at public-private partnerships associated with parking garages. We've got landscaping, we've got a janitorial division that maintains 2 billion square feet on a daily basis. HVAC, mechanical, energy. In 2012, we saved our clients over $3 billion in energy costs. So from ABM's perspective, we self-perform this. And it helps to save our clients money, because if you don't self-perform it, you've got to outsource it. Essentially from our perspective, you have to outsource it, and then that's markup on markup on markup, which reduces the amount of scope that you can address within your facilities. So ABM manages all these different things. We have employees, over 100,000 employees, that do these areas, perform these various functions for our clients. So it helps them to keep their profit operation up.
Can you give us some examples of some local clients that you were recording?
Sure. It's not Lebanon. They had noticed that several of their surrounding communities had made significant infrastructure improvements, and they wanted to address some of their needs and also be known as the community of choice in their mind. So we took care of the street lighting, Jane Jamal's LED street lighting. We addressed the public safety building, which is their new firehouse and police station. And that building was only built eight years ago, and it was costly for them to operate because it wasn't set up properly right from the beginning. We addressed their needs within the ice rink, old HVAC system beyond their useful life, temperature controls, lighting systems and so forth, Brentwood, the City of Washington. I've all done projects, and they all are completely co-authored. So we have ideas when we walk through facilities, but we always want to gather your perspective, because ideally, if I can help address, fund a specific need, the way that these programs work, you're using those items that pay for themselves very quickly, help fund those programs for those infrastructure needs that are slower payback, hence the 15 or 20-year term. So you're able to get more accomplished this way. And on an annual basis, you have those guaranteed savings that ensures...
It just sounds almost too good to me.
My recommendation is we want to contact the people who go on with this ahead of time. Because they're the best people. I can sit and up here and tell you how great we are and everything. I'd rather have you contact them and get their perspective on. Because that's the question or comment that I hear most often.
Are there small communities like the Brentwood, I mean, not Lebanon, kindly, but...
Brentwood. Brentwood, Brentwood's very small. It's about, you're much larger than Brentwood.
And do you have some people that, you have some contact people that...
Absolutely. Absolutely. I can give you as many as you would like.
Is that included in the...
Oh, absolutely. There are references with the...
Those aren't going to open yet. And that's kind of the handleout right now, is waiting for maybe a new city manager...
As I explained to Eric...
To address this.
Yeah, we're interviewing this week, and hopefully we'll have somebody on board here soon. And I just don't think it's a project that we can take on until we have a city manager in place. So hopefully, it's just going to postpone it a little bit. What do you guys think? It sounds like the good things that we're into. Anybody else have any questions for these gentlemen?
My only comment would be that hopefully you're able to find an individual to address these things for it, because every month that passes by, those are dollars you spend with the utility company you can never get back.
I hear you. Right now, we're just...
And based on what we think...
Doesn't matter.
Probably around $7,000 a month you'd be generating savings to address the infrastructural needs. And ideally, the cost of those improvements costs less than $7,000, so it puts money back in your...
Well, there we just paid for a healthcare increase.
That's the concept behind it. It makes sense, our recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in, and Eric for...
Yeah, I have a...
...the precision. Take that in a month, maybe a couple of weeks, see where we're at. And then we will have, we will have to extend the invitation, we will extend the invitation to the other two bidders to say, we're 100%. Can you do that? Do you have everyone that information?
You know, what's probably in the...
No, in the, well, we don't want to...
In the qualification proposals. I didn't want to step in on myself.
Okay, but we'll deal with that.
You know, okay.
No, my other question is, how long do you expect the bids?
Yeah, how long are the bids viable?
I don't think there is. These are...
There's no deadline? Not, okay.
That was actually a question that I had today, was...
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay, but, you know, it's been pretty dry, so if you want her feelings to tick off. And did you make a copy of that?
Oh, yes, I did. I'm sorry.
Can I have it? Yeah, okay, administrative finance first.
First, we'll have an ordinance for a tax street bond financing. That's going to be just taken four years.
Okay, and then we'll have a memorandum of agreement that asks me for the community service officer, right?
Right. It's already made up. You should have a copy.
I saw it.
And that would be a law by resolution.
And then there's this emergency operation plan.
Yeah, that was out this morning. Skipper just walked in with that. I have a copy here. It's basically just the plan being updated with all of the new council that came on in 2015. If anybody wants to see that anymore, please...
Yeah, resolution.
Resolution, it's blocking. We did that before.
The police department, we have an ordinance, Jim, you have an ordinance to move parking on Depot from Jefferson to Legionnaire. Parking on Jefferson Street from Spring to Chestnut. This was a lot of the parking that's put in place when we had the...
Right, and the ordinance is going to move all, all public parking from, on Depot from, from...
Jefferson to Legionnaire.
Jefferson to Legionnaire, and on Jefferson from...
Bring to Chestnut.
Bring to Chestnut, right. So we'll have that one prepared.
And the resolution to accept the policy procedure manual that's prepared under the state accreditation guidelines. Jim, gee. What's that? How far are you, how much further till you get your accreditation, you know?
Policy manual, maybe. That's the last one. The policy manual's completed.
Yeah.
I spoke with Mr. Kelly today and talked about getting the resolution or whatever we need for it. That's the biggest part of the accreditation. Right now, we have to do proofs of the policy, that we're using the policy. And I can't predict how long that will take, but we will have a dry run, so to say, by the end of the year, probably in the fall. Once we find out what we need to tweak, then by spring, we'll be accredited.
Great, great.
Pretty much, Derek.
Good work. Public works?
First item is that the ordinance for the private citizen signage request. I'm going to say, council, we try to have that until July, might be the obvious. I'd like to look at... Just to be honest, with anybody's, it's our size.
Yeah, you know, I'm really torn on this thing. We have, how many signs Joe? 157,000 or something like that?
A little under 4,000, I was counting.
In 2.2 square miles, but, you know, I want to be business friendly too, so I want to help as many businesses as I can, so it's, I don't know. It is free advertising for them, I know, but it keep, but it, but... They're small businesses. They're small businesses.
If you think about that on an annual basis, and divide that by 12 months, what an extremely high cost. I mean, even if we charge, let's say, $150, $200 a year.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking maybe we should charge. And that, first of all, if we charge something for the signage, then, number one, it would limit... Joe, are you having a stroke? Or a thought that you want to share?
Go ahead.
Okay. I don't know. I'm just, I don't know. I mean, I think, first of all, I think if there was a fee associated with it, it would limit the amount of people that wanted them.
It might. And if there isn't a fee, I think...
It's a free throw.
Everybody should... Right, it's a free throw. All the other businesses should come up and say, hey, we want it. Something that says we would like seven signs.
Well, and that's part of the reason why we put a stop on it, said we need a policy, because we were getting it undated with every daycare center and school and business and, you know, and restaurant.
Part of that fee that's charged every year would be for Joe or someone under his designation to go and look at all the signs, make sure they're being kept up properly. If they're not, if they're disrepair, then a notice would go out, meaning it's fixed or the sign's removed.
Okay, well, is that part, is that in one of the, is that in some of the ordinances you're looking at?
Well, I haven't gotten one yet. I'm trying to figure out where to go to look at one. But that's something Joe and I have talked about. There would be an inspection fee, and that annually.
Did anybody check other surrounding communities?
That's what he's doing. That's what Jim's trying to find, somebody that has...
I'm going to check.
You go through sometimes, there's very little signs, so apparently they have something.
This would be the signs that the business puts out?
Right, not, not safety signs, not, not like the...
Say, you know, so-and-so's restaurant this way, and so-and-so's directional signs to private businesses.
They're currently, they're putting their own direction.
No, currently, they're coming to us, and they get the sign, and Joe puts it up.
Okay.
So they're not uniform, you know?
There's no uniformity.
We're not looking for uniformity.
There's no real reason not to ask for seven signs or eight signs.
Right, so there's no, like, regulation in place. Exactly. There's no ordinance that deals with it at all, and that's, and that's, and that's why we have 4,000 signs in 2.2 square miles. Okay, so you want it all for now?
Well, and all I'm saying is that...
Yeah, Joe said over 4,000 signs, that's not...
Let's take it off.
Where, Joe's at work, and he goes out and talks. Right, Joe?
Joe, you need one.
Life went on.
So we're going to...
Okay, so...
I'm just asking, maybe keep that off for a while and put it in...
Let's put it in August. I don't want to rush it. It's not, it's not important. I mean, it's important, but it's not, like, critical. And I'd rather have it done right than rushing.
I would just like to see somewhat of a sign.
Don't ask me to push it past August.
No, we're not going to push it past August.
Okay, and then that, that kind of handles the other two, right? So you're going to put them on? Yeah, we're going to put over in a month, yeah. And also under public, to get approved the Act 537 update?
Right. We did preliminary approval, they've now arrived at a final consent agreement, and LMA has a tutorial protocol, it's already proven, and we're going for the progress.
And then I missed this somewhere, but Ann, Ann's letter that she got about...
That also is out.
Yeah, I know, but I, it would probably go under planning. Oh, okay.
Yeah, above unfinished business.
Yeah, okay.
I could piece up on Friday, and I can get that to you.
We have a request from a resident to use subsidiary own property to park on.
Yeah, so... 6.5 by 23-foot piece of ground over a word wrap. If we do grant the permission, we have to make sure that they understand they have complete liability. I don't know if we use it, do we use the child right?
We just, we cut the grass there, that's about all we do. We maintain the grass, or the net just sits there. It's right behind this house. Okay, we'll knock...
He's been parking there for 20 years.
No, he's parking on the other.
Oh, he's parked on the property.
Yeah. And then we'll have any appointments towards an authority that are...
So you want that one on the agenda?
What, appointments or requests? Yeah, I mean, I think we have to put it on. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Well, yeah, we could, I mean...
Can I ask a question? Why are we owning it?
Why are we...
Owning it. What good does it do us? I mean, my thought would be, let's get a fair market value and say, you're right. But why should we continue to own it for not going to use it?
Joe, do we use that for anything ever?
Then a sidebar, Hannah?
Oh, I want to, I want to add something for the next month. I want to talk about the, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, but... Yeah, it's a good question. That's a good question.
Why not just approach the landowner, let's see if we can get a fair market value?
Is there an interest to buy him? I don't think he wants to buy it.
He just wants to use it.
He just wants, he said, I'll have the grass for us if we can park there. Okay, well, we can think about it, talk about it. I also want to talk about the tree. The tree.
Yeah, you should go down there.
The sappy tree.
The sappy tree. Joe, that tree don't look all that healthy to me. So I went down and looked at it.
It's, it's dead.
You know which one I'm talking about?
Oh, yes.
We took a family field trip. That tree's dead.
She, she offered to, you know, plant another tree and, in its place. She just looked like that being removed, so, because it's...
It's decrepit looking.
It's decrepit looking, and it's full of bees, and it's ugly.
It was a big vibrant healthy tree that we tried to cut down.
Sorry, Joe. It's just small, but... Anyway, so we all, we all, did, did everybody go see the tree?
I saw it. I didn't, I didn't think it was that bad, but...
Well, so anyways, she, she's been working with Nick Calice, who I'm sure everybody knows is leaving at the end of the month, but we're trying, and Jared Trento is going to act as interim director of LCRP until we find another director. And to find appropriate, an appropriate tree. But she, she will, at her expense, plant another tree and not it down. You know, I didn't get into that one for me.
That was what she said.
Yeah.
So you, you had decided...
She said it was everything that they're asking.
Yeah. It did.
Now, I'm trying to pursue her, because there's a way, with the motion to reconsideration.
Yeah.
But when a motion fails for life in a second, I think that's...
No, we voted it down, because I ended up breaking the tie.
All right, then if it's voted down...
No, I got it.
Prevailing side, we're voting it down.
Voting it down.
We have to make the motion to reconsider.
Okay, we know who we are.
Okay. It has to come from the prevailing side of reconsider.
So you need a new motion.
So we need a new motion.
Right, motion, two motions, motion to reconsider, and then if that passes, then the motion will be considered to whatever...
Again, another example of trying to work with the business owner that, you know, is a very good business owner and appreciate all the things they do for the community.
Well, I can write this as a motion on the agenda. Yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order? Anybody out there? Jim, I know you, wait a minute. Mr. Kelly has, Mr. Kelly has something first.
Just a question, something that we deferred, and there's been some from the research on it, and that is appointing a voting delegate to the tax collection committee. And there was some discussion about perhaps utilizing the position of the business manager to represent both the school district and the city, because there are times we can't just get people there. I looked at the bylaws. We can name by position as we've dealt. You don't have to name a person. But bylaws do restrict us to two alternate delegates. So right now, the city manager, once hired, is the primary voting person. The first alternate is the mayor, the second alternate is the deputy mayor. The second alternate is the deputy mayor. If we wanted to use that approach of having the business manager for the district be our alternate, we have to make him the second alternate, which means we have to eliminate the deputy mayor. They in turn would probably utilize the mayor as their alternative. So that we have one person for each entity representing vote. It would got down to a point where it was hard to get people to get to the meetings. So all I'm saying is we can't go three, we can only go two. And do we want to, I can talk a little bit further with Mr. Nichols and see if he's even approached the board on this. I'm just asking a little conference pleasure. I can let this ride for another month.
We were going to use me and Mike?
Well, right now, it's city manager, you, and Mike.
Yeah.
It would have to probably go city manager, you, business manager.
Business manager from the school.
And on theirs, it would be whatever their first person is.
Dan Watson. Dan Watson, that is their second person.
Well, no, they would be the mayor to represent them.
I understand. Okay.
If they didn't use him...
Then they'd ask you to go.
Where am I going?
PACS selection committee. That's, that's only if the city manager, not goes as primary voting person.
Right.
Let me check to the district, see how they feel about it. I know Mr. Watson's fine with it.
Okay. Whatever, whatever we have to do, we have to do.
Okay. And we also still have a report.
Yeah, and any appointments with authorities?
I only received any for my term in this board.
How many have you received?
Three so far.
What were the stipulations for plotties?
Interestingly enough, for the LMA board, okay, the position that is open is Warren Markham, he's the... He's a Latrobe resident. However, I've been told by Tom Gray that if you work in the city of Latrobe...
I heard own a business.
Well, he said work or employed in the city or own a business in the city, you can qualify for that position. You might want to check that out because we, Tom and I had a long conversation about this.
I remember years ago, Mr. Kent, Latrobe, who lived in Ligonier but owned Roland Rock, grown up.
Right.
Was on the LMA. Although he did not reside here, he was an owner of the business that was here.
Can you check with Mr. Jim?
Yeah.
Because my understanding from Tom Gray is if they're employed in the city, they're qualified as well. Employed or own a business or live, they qualify. And then, you know, we come from there. One other item for, we're going to do, we have interview scheduled, we have one interview scheduled Wednesday. I don't know if you guys saw your emails. Adam, 5:15? No, that's Thursday. 5:15, I think, on Wednesday. And then there were four, now there's three on Thursday, and we try to reschedule one of them. And they start on four. I wanted to an extent an invitation to Joe and Jim and Ann and Var if you would like to sit in on those first round of the areas.
Which ones?
This Wednesday, 5:15, and you, of course. This Wednesday at 5:15, and then Thursday, the next day, from four to whenever we're done. There's three candidates. Well, initially, we were going to just bring you guys in on the second round. I know. But I, but since we only have four candidates, I don't, at this, no, the fifth one, we're going to have to reschedule. No, the sixth one never called me back. The fifth one was scheduled, called me today and said he has a conflict. So we have to try to reschedule him, and he can't do it anymore. So we're going to have to figure out another day.
Which night?
6:30 on Thursday. So I'm going to try to move the 7:45 person up to 6:30. So we don't, you know. So I thought, if you guys want to sit, my thoughts were, you can sit in and listen, and then when we narrow the scope, then you can ask questions. I just don't want it to get too big. I don't want like 10 people learning questions at the beginning. It would be there forever. But my foreman from the DCED is going to, you know, is going to walk us through. He'll have the resumes. Because no one's seen the resumes yet except for me. And so he'll have the resumes and all the questions that we decided that we're going to answer and ask them so that we're asking all of them the same kind of questions. So you're welcome to, you guys, walk me through if you want. And you'll be here at, let's say, 5:15. There'll only be one that day. We need to have an executive session, so there's no adjournment since this isn't a meeting meeting.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Now that we've approved the UPMC insurance...
Yes.
Does anybody realize that UPMC doctors that reside in Latrobe and have their businesses in the area no longer have visiting privileges at Latrobe Area Hospital or Westmoreland Hospital? They want their patients to go to, I guess, to Monroeville. So whenever somebody has a problem and they go to Latrobe, they will not be seeing their UPMC doctor. They'll probably have to be given a referral to an excel health doctor.
All I can tell you, from having my parents dealing with it, when you go into the hospital, you never see your doctor, no matter who they are, because they have special, what do you call them? They're hospital doctors that communicate with your doctor.
Well, UPMC had privileges in Latrobe. And then UPMC decided that because they want the business to go to their facilities, they no longer are having their doctors go to Latrobe. So that's something that you may want to tell your employees.
I'm surprised I haven't seen anything about that in the papers. I think so. I think you might be...
Yeah, you can see, you don't have to see UPMC doctors.
To have UPMC insurance, UPMC...
Well, if I have a heart problem, I want to see my heart doctor.
No, but my, our point is if you have UPMC insurance...
You don't have to see them.
It's not necessarily the UPMC medical facility. You may be thinking of...
Well, the reality of the situation, Jim, is we couldn't switch if we wanted to at this point because in order for us to even get a quote from Highmark, we would have had to go into the...
Well, I'm not questioning that. I'm just, I just wanted to make it known that, you know, they're going to, you know, maybe go to a... They've got the UPMC insurance, and you know, then...
Actually, Jim, my dad has UPMC.
If the hospital's not in the, in a UPMC hospital, there may be a higher payment.
Hey, Jim, my dad has a UPMC insurance plan, and he hasn't had any problems.
Oh.
When he went over to Latrobe Hospital, when he had his heart attack, everything, nothing, no problems. So I don't know.
Well, I don't want to bid now.
Yeah. So, okay.
Now, back on that River Avenue thing. You're going to designate for one neighbor that parking space. Is that what you're going to do?
That's my, that's my concern.
I live on River Avenue. Could I go and park down there?
I know.
I mean, you could, you're opening up a can of worms that throughout the whole city now, some piece of property the city owns, and someone lives near it, they're going to say, can I park on the city property? And then you have the club right down the street. So what's to prevent people from the club that went up there to park? This guy to say, that's my property? I mean, you know, I think it has to be thought pretty thoroughly. And second thing on River Avenue, they were spraying down here the other day, and I don't know who they hired, but the guy was walking down by the creek spraying more into the water than on the wheat. Put there and watched from the hole. Never hits the hillside, just on the base down here where he's not supposed to spray. If I'm not mistaken, they're not supposed to spray near the water. But they were spraying on the water. But, I mean, River Avenue's a forgotten place in Latrobe. Because if you look at the last two maps, it's not even on there anymore.
Yeah, Ron?
I was up looking on a packet that I'm going to give to council on smoking in the park.
Yeah, we need to do something about that, too.
I have, I have a blueprint from the rec department. I got quotes on a bench. I got quotes on a cigarette trash can and so forth. So once I get everything put together, I'll give it to council or county. And I'm trying to keep the police department out because they got enough problems. So I think with the residents, and to give you an example, I have about 20 tractor traders that go by my house and come back the other way. So it's like 40 tractor traders going up Spring Street, which is legal. But some of them starting to turn on Hamilton. So I stop and tell them. I never see that truck yet because I tell them it could be fined, and they stay off there. So I think with the residents, if we come up with some, some solution that will free the police department and keep the smokers out of the park. So as soon as I get everything together, I'll get it to council.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
You're good?
Okay, guys, we're done. We're going to have an executive session down in the squad room. Everyone that, you know, needs to be there goes down there. Who you are, wanting chief. Chief, chief.